All right, this time I'll call the court to order. And at this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Brian Booth if he would say the invocation.
There have many followers we come before you this morning, dear Lord. The Lord watch over this court. There have many followers watch over this sacred place, dear Lord. For bless this court. Their decision we make today is for the program of our county. There have many followers in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner Tackett.
Here.
Commissioner Booth.
Here.
We are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask our emergency management director, 911 coordinator Doug Tackett, whose last day was yesterday, but who is here today for recognition, if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the December 21st, 2021, January 4th, 2022, January 11th, 2022, and January 18th, 2022 meetings of the Pike County Fiscal Court. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jason Tackett. Is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Brian Booth. Any question or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is acknowledgement of receipt of the Mountain Water District budget for January 1st, 2022, December 31st, 2022. We have Board Chairman Johnny Dennison, Board Member Randy Tackett, and Mountain Water Superintendent Roy Sargeant. Would you all come up to the table? And we'll get you in and get you out because I know you all have a lot of work to be to be done. Welcome, sir. You have the chair.
There it is. Okay. I'll just do a short narrative of what was forming in the budget. I think you all have a copy of the budget. The committee was Commissioner Myrtle Runyon, myself, Mike Spears, our CPA, Roy Sargeant, our manager, Kerry Hatfield, our CFO, and Jamie Hatfield, the sewer operation manager. As always, we started the budget process by downloading the previous 12 months financials into an Excel accounting software. Period we analyzed was through November 1st, 20, through October 31st, 21, the most recent 12-month period. We started the process in early December 2021. We met two times during the process and we had numerous phone conversations between the meetings about the adjustments. We incorporated the debt service for capital projects that would occur and that needs to be paid during the process. The adjustments stated above were made to various accounts based on known and estimated changes that were expected to occur. The summary is the residential water sales were reduced on a prorated basis for a decrease in customers during the test period of 74 customers. That's what was deleted in the previous 12 months. Commercial water sales were increased based on a prorated share for the same period. Customer late payments were projected to increase by $60,000 back to the pre-COVID levels. The PSC had issued an order during the pandemic that we were not allowed to receive any late payments for that period. Residential sewer revenues were increased during the test period for 108 customers, and that was due to the Belfry plant becoming fully operational. And we basically cut that in half because we had a half a year that it was operational. Correct. Commercial sewer revenues were increased for the same particular reason. Payroll was increased with raises for current employees and a transition of five from manpower to full-time and four new hires for the construction crew. Resulting in an increase of $352,172. And we decreased the manpower budget to zero to show the transition to the employees for the district. We had a 13% increase in our health insurance, resulting in an increase of the insurance expense of $45,789. And during that timeframe, we also added nine additional to our health insurance from the temp service, plus the new hires, with an additional $58,320. The city of Wimson and Pikeville were budgeted with minimum based on our contracts with a pad for catastrophic events. And I think we understand that those do happen. Sewage fees, as part of the agreement with the city of Wimson, they agreed to reduce our sewage fees, and this resulted in a decrease in the sewage fees of approximately $14,266. Auto and transportation increased by $33,415 based on the last six months averages for inflation. The dues, meetings, and education adjusted to pre-COVID levels since the classes were all virtual. We did not have any overnight lodging meals for an increase of $15,426. And one of the items that we've all been concerned about is our retirement expense. That will increase to another 12% in July. Current rate of 24.06, we increased to 26.95, and this resulted in an increase in retirement expense of $46,370. Our repairs and maintenance was increased to 1.2 million from the actual $747,894 for the test period. We increased this due to the ongoing aging of our infrastructure and the fact that we were lean during the test periods as we were expending money to replace meters which are capitalized. This resulted in an increase of $407,233. The amount was also increased based on our estimate of inflation of 6%. The interest expense, based on amortization schedules, we expect interest expense to decrease by $134,468. This is primarily the result of a one-year savings due to refinancing of RD bonds with Regions Bank. And also included with that is the principal payment. So we're going to have basically a cash flow savings of around $280,000 by refinancing those bonds. And various other accounts were changed for inflation only at our proposed estimated rate of 6%. That is the summary. You've got a copy of the budget. Do you have any questions?
Just a few questions. Obviously, the budget operating revenue is showing a slight decrease in operating revenue. The budget's roughly 10.6 million. You know, one of the big factors that I've had a concern about here at the fiscal court that affects the health department, affects all your quasi-governmental entities that are in the pension system is the increasing pension cost. The rate does go up to almost 27 cents per dollar of payroll this year. My calculations are correct. In four years after this year, you're looking at a rate of about 47.5 cents per dollar. What impact? I mean, is there a way that the district can start preparing for that now? Or is that something that's going to have to be dealt with on an annual basis?
The only way that the district could compare that we can overcome that is through a rate study.
Well, it's concerning because, you know...
We have to have so many employees to manage this district. They have been under, I think at one time we had 72 employees. Is that correct? Now, yeah, now we're down to 62, somewhere in that neighborhood. That's a given cost that, to me, is kindly fixed. I mean, we have to have a minimum number of employees. And the only way that we can overcome that is we have to increase our revenues. We have cut expenses to the bare bottom with these budgets and projections because we had to. So the normal repairs and maintenance that were occurring are not occurring now.
You know, one of the things that we're going to have to deal with on the pension side is we've projected just some rough numbers that if we don't hire anybody else at the county, and I'm talking about between the fiscal court, the jail, and we don't give another pay raise, because obviously, the greater the payroll, the more people work and the greater the payroll expense, the more that pension cost is annually. We're projected to go from 2.4 million in pension costs this year to 4.2 million in four years after this fiscal year. And you know, how are we, how are we going to absorb $2 million over that, you know, per year is concerning. I know it's something that you are going to be concerned about as well. What...
We've got a little different situation than county. We're able to apply to the PSC for a rate increase. So that theoretically would cover our increases. And from going forward, what I'm going to propose is we're going to have a rate increase, I think, in 2022. And we're going to have to, we're going to try to, we're going to pass a resolution that this rate increase, and that's what the PSC actually wants these districts to do, is we're going to try to have a rate increase every three years to try to cover those expenses. They allow us to recoup those expenses in our rate increases.
You know, one of the things that needs to happen is Mountain Water District, the fiscal courts around Kentucky, the other quasi-governmental entities, they need to reach out to the legislature because, you know, that pension cost that ultimately has to be passed on to taxpayers or ratepayers has been basically allowed by the General Assembly. You know, the pension system didn't get in the shape it's in overnight. It doesn't have to get out of it overnight either. And I have some serious concern about the fact that the legislature has allowed that situation to develop like it has.
Well, it puts local governments in a total bind. But for a utility that's got the ability to go to the PSC and request a rate increase based on your current expenses, we've got an out. But the problem with that is that cost is passed on to our customers. So if we can get the legislature to change some of this pension cost, it would alleviate a lot of burden, especially on water districts and in utilities.
You know, you and I have had this conversation that we have so many people on fixed income.
Absolutely.
And I know from our conversations that it has been personally difficult on you to even think about the long-term impact of utility cost on some of the folks that we have here.
They can't afford it.
They can't afford it. And we're going to have to have some help eventually. Whether this court's here, or whoever the court is, or who folks are that's sitting in this chair or those chairs, they're going to have to have some help from the legislature because the utilities and the local governments are not going to be able to absorb those pension costs without it being extremely painful to our constituents, our customers.
I think that's what's occurring right now with our electric bills. They have got the PSC, they've got a standing order that they can adjust with a fuel adjustment clause based on a base rate. And that's why our electric bills were so much higher this last month.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I've had people reach out to me over the cost of electricity. And we've got people on fixed income that don't make enough money to even cover the cost of their electricity, much less any other expenses. So I know that you are cognizant of that. We're cognizant of it. We're going to do everything we can to work with the Mountain Water District to make sure that we contain costs and rates and expenses to the extent possible. What do you think the big challenges over the next year or two for the water district will be? Randy, that may be a better question for on the...
Obviously, our water loss percentage is one of them. It's gone down, I think, almost 10.8% from six years ago. Our aging infrastructure is another thing that's going to bog us down that we're going to have to address. It's not been addressed for years, but we're going to have to address it if we want to keep providing quality water to the people of Pike County.
You know, I've got a lot of friends in Martin County who had to deal with the problem of aging water infrastructure in that county when no money had been set aside to replace it. And, you know, most people saw the stories in the newspaper and on television about, it reached a critical situation here a couple of years ago. And the big concern is we've got to address the infrastructure needs of the district now before it gets to that point.
We're nowhere near that critical of a situation, but we don't want to get there.
That's the...
And the only thing you can do is start fixing it. You can't look backwards. You can't look at what's been done in the past. You've got to look at the shape you're in today and go forward.
And you know, I've said before that as long as I'm judge, we're not going to let Mountain Water get to the point that Martin County did. We can fix it. Too many people, my family, your families, all three of you depend on Mountain Water. So, you know, we're willing to work with you. We're waiting to see. It's my understanding there's going to be some additional monies appropriated in this budget for water projects. As you, we're waiting on KIA to, Sharon, we've not heard from KIA yet on any of those. We've got different projects in on the water loss and on some water line extension projects. We're waiting to hear from KIA. It's my understanding that there's likely to be another $250 or $350 million set aside for water projects. So I think that by the end of April, when the legislature adjourns, that we'll have a better idea of what other resources are out there. Another thing is the federal infrastructure bill that was recently passed is going to put some money out. And once we have a better idea of what monies may be able to be applied for or come to the local districts, you know, it'll give us a better idea of what might be there in terms of taking care of the water loss or the aging infrastructure. And it would be my opinion that when, if there's additional monies come down from the federal government or the legislature, that, you know, starting to address some of the aging infrastructure would be a, should be a prime focus, the use of that money. What's your thoughts on that?
I know we're going to need a lot of money in the next several years to take care of the problems that we've got. With water lines that have been in, you know, nearly 40 years, storage tanks, we need money put in on telemetry to help us track where our water leaks are so that we can more readily fix them. That's just going to have to happen. However, we come up with the money, you know, that's what's got to happen.
The funding issue.
Johnny had brought a point up that there's never any money set aside. When Utility Management Group had the district, they, it's my understanding, had brought this issue to the district's attention that there's numerous water tanks around the county. And those tanks are supposed to be refurbished every 15 or 20 years, as I understand it.
Large tanks are refurbished. We have the large ones, not the skid tanks. Our skid tanks.
We've got 70 of those.
Yeah, around 70 of those. We've got 40 large tanks that we already have a maintenance plan for.
Okay.
But we still have another 70 skid tanks that needs to be addressed.
So it's the skid tanks that are needed? Okay, so the big ones have been done?
Yes.
Have all the big ones been done, Roy?
Yes, sir. They've been painting those on the maintenance program. They inspect them every year. Any maintenance issues, they make repairs. And then every so many years, they paint them interior and exterior.
Good. And then the skid tanks are what have to be addressed?
They're in terrible shape.
We've got two new ones that we're in the process of getting them installed. But that's two. We've got 68 more.
So how much, how much is the cost to refurbish those tanks?
On the skid tanks, we have not really done anything yet. We've got an estimate. We're getting ready to bid one just to kind of see what it would come in in a competitive nature. Right now, we're looking at possibly in the neighborhood of 30 to refurbish the one we were looking at. But like I said, that's just an estimate.
$30,000?
We're looking at bidding it.
So you're talking a couple million just to refurbish, just to refurbish the water tanks?
Yeah, a new 20,000-gallon tank will cost you approximately $50,000. And by the time you do site work, get it up there, you're probably spending another $15,000 or $20,000. So you're spending $60,000 to $70,000.
Is that something that possibly, you know, a lot of those sides are, you know, they're all in the head of these hauls. Some of those roads that was constructed to put those skid tanks up there are gone now. Is that something, you know, we don't have a dozer. Is that something the county could do? This Dozer Road? I don't...
I don't see the road supervisor in here. But, you know, typically, we can't work, our road equipment can't work on any road that's not in the county road system. So, you know, probably from a legal standpoint, we could not do that.
Okay.
Fabian, can you come up here for a second real quick? And I think I know the answer to this.
We're a quasi-government unit. You know, the problem that I can foresee with that is actually getting on, some of those don't have, all those roads don't have easements, is that correct?
The older ones, we have to go back and look at. It's old, we don't know what it's saying.
So here's the question. Fabian, they've asked, some of these roads that were cut by Mountain Water District in the head of the haulers, where they put those skid tanks in, the 20,000-gallon skid tanks, most of them are 20,000 gallons, I assume, Roy?
10 of 20.
Those roads, a lot of them have grown in or had slides and stuff. And they ask if the county could help with that. Technically, the county road department can't work on a road that's not in the road system.
That is correct. But you could vote to where we, we could. But it's just going to, I mean, it's going to put a bigger burden on what I already have. I mean, it's just like Johnny had said a minute ago. You know, it takes a certain amount of employees to do a certain job. And I'm kind of overwhelmed as it is.
I mean, I think what, you know, our road crews are so stretched thin. We've only, you know, to take care of the amount of road miles we have, obviously, if, obviously, if there are roads that you can't access that you need to get to, I'm sure that the court would find a way to make that happen.
And then we could, like I said, we could, we can help. But I don't think it would be something that we would want to do as we would take it on as a permanent.
As an ongoing.
As an ongoing thing.
This would just be cutting the road back to what the original...
Right.
Maybe in and out within, with the day.
And then we could, you know, we could do something like that and we could work with them, especially, you know, they give us enough notice to where we can plan to get those done. We can do stuff, you know, we could work it in.
I guess from a legal standpoint, I asked Kevin, you know, you can't...
That's what I'm saying, you could almost do...
I was asking, can we do an interlocal, I don't know if you can do an interlocal agreement with a quasi-governmental.
I'm not sure. Look into that and see.
That's exactly the question I just asked. I know you, I know we've got quasi, that we've got interlocal agreements with like our municipalities. But I don't know that we have. But obviously, where it's a quasi-governmental and it's a direct public benefit, then I think it probably is something that we could do.
It should be able to.
And I think so. We'll find the answer to that out.
And meantime, we'll have Roy do the research and make sure we've got easements because I could foresee a problem if we don't have an easement on that road.
And that's something that I...
You'll be going over private property.
It's private property.
And that's something that we would have to know because if it's private property, then we...
We can't get on it.
Yeah, I can't do that because then I get into, I get into a problem.
Yeah.
I know Ronnie was talking about...
Well, Roy says some of them may not, so he'll have to do.
We'll just have to dig. Some of those have been in system for a long time.
It's probably about like...
I know you all got an easement with me. Yeah, I'm sure the majority of them would do. Some of them may have just been a handshake and, you know, word.
Go ahead.
Well, if we can assist them and help them, the only thing that I know we'd have a problem with if we could use our dozer is if Fabian could get it transported there. And then we could do it like kind of what we're doing in the Flatwoods.
I don't know that you could do that. I mean, you can't, I don't know that you could do that as far as paying an independent contractor to do it.
Well, he's already hired by us anyway.
Yeah, but he's working on county property on the county trail system. This will be doing work. I don't think the fiscal court could spend money on an independent contractor to work on a road to service a Mountain Water.
Right. What if we utilize one of our employees?
Well, we could use mine. I mean, I have, I have... Well, I'm just thinking, trying to take away from you, you know? Yeah. Well, that's the reason I say if we pre-plan this, just give me a notice, let me plan for it, I'm sure we can do it. You just, you know, I just wouldn't be able to just come up one day. Need to check it out anyway and see what we can do and what we can't do.
Do we have employees that are capable of running dozers?
I think I've got one.
Most of those roads, they're not that long, are they, Roy? Most of them's not very long.
Some of them are.
Some it varies. Some are pretty long, some are short.
Yeah, but my thing is if we did use our dozer, I'd want one of my employees to be on it.
Just run a dozer.
Yeah. I understand that.
So what we'll do is we'll figure out what the legalities of that are. We can reach out. We'll get an opinion from the local, Department of Local Government, see what they say, speak to Rich Ornstein, who's counsel down at CAECO.
See if the county's got some available funds to help with the...
Kevin said he could get an opinion for us this week.
Okay.
That's a new issue in the three, little over three years that we've been in office that's never come up. From a technical standpoint, the fiscal court cannot work on any road that's not in the road system unless there's an interlocal agreement with another government entity. The question is, could we do an interlocal agreement with a quasi-governmental? I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I have looked at the statute on quasi-governmental or on the interlocal agreements. And I do not recall whether it says anything about a...
I don't either.
And Fabian doesn't either because we were looking at it from a standpoint of, you know, interlocal agreement with Pikeville, coal-run Elkhorn City.
Right.
But we'll do our best, if it can be legally done, to assist Mountain Water to get access to those tanks. And I think that, you know, we'll stay in touch with our legislative delegation. And hopefully, in two months or so, we're going to know where additional funding may be for some of these infrastructure projects. But I've been told by several members of the delegation that additional monies will be included in the budget from the American Relief Plan dollars that were allocated to the Commonwealth. And I'm not sure if it's ARP money or if it's CARES Act money that's left. But then additional monies will be allocated to local governments for water and sewer projects.
Okay. And I'll forward Jenny, we've got the, we've got basically an escrow account set up now for the 1.3. So I'll forward her that information so that'll be available.
Okay, so we're going to do treasures business here. And one of the issues on the 1.3 million, and just to remind the public, the fiscal court has committed 1.3 million of the ARP funds to Mountain Water District to help with the water laws. And of course, that's going to be subject to Mountain Water entering into the sub-agreement with the retained counsel and financial advisor to make sure that the money is spent in compliance with the ARP guidelines.
Who is the counsel?
It is Langdon Worley of Sturgill Barker Turner, I think is the full name of the firm. But I can get you that number. And Mr. Palmer, our financial advisor. Obviously, we need to make sure that it's spent. And I think, Roy, have you talked to Mr. Palmer about the project? What needs to be done?
Yeah, I've submitted several emails to him regards to questioning and also approval for some things. And I've not got any response or approval yet.
Okay, so let me find out what's going on with that. I had a conversation with him about that. It's my understanding from him is they were waiting on the bid to be let on the project.
He's not approved the engineer yet through the RFP, RFQ we did.
I don't know that he would, I don't know that he would have to approve the RFQ. I don't know that he would, this, I don't know that he would have to approve the R F Q on it. Let me, after we get done, if you can hang around, we'll go call him and see if we can find out what the status of that is.
He approves engineer, then we can proceed to go ahead and, and set up the bid documents through them.
Okay, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the R F Q has to be approved on that. Yeah, they don't have to approve, they, they don't have to sign off on the R F P or the R F Q or whatever, or the bid. They just have to, you're gonna, you need to do that the way you're going, you're already doing it. The only thing that they're gonna be the check and balance on is to make sure that that expenditure that's been approved is compliant with the law uh, and the guidelines that have been set forth by treasury. So you don't have to wait on them to sign off, and that may be where there's confusion. You need to go ahead and do your project just like you're, you would any other project. Get the R F Q done or R F P, get that done, get your bid put out. And then when it's time to do the bid, make sure that the bid, uh, is gonna be compliant with the provisions. Do it under our normal procurement, and then they'll make sure that the expenditure, the way it's structured, will be lawful. So, they don't have, they don't have a rubber stamp or have to approve what you're doing. We just want to make sure when that bid's put out that it's compliant, so that once it's paid out of those monies, if treasury comes in and audits it, they're not gonna say that was an inappropriate expenditure of money. Because there are some constraints on how that money can be spent in terms of.
He, he has asked for, uh, uh, resolutions in regards to this and some other items, so I was just assuming he had to prove them. He's asked for a procurement process and those resolutions, I've sent him all the information he's asked for. And I've just kind of waiting on him to respond.
So let's just, if you hang, hang around to the break, we'll run back here and try to call him and find out what the holdup is.
All right.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, here's what it says, um, any agreement on interlocal, any agreement in which at least one party is not, well, interlocal agreements have to be submitted, it says at least any, any interlocal agreement in which at least one party is not a city, county, et cetera, shall be submitted to the Attorney General's Office for approval. We'll reach out to, uh, we'll reach out to, uh, let me see right here. We'll reach out to Matt Stevens, General Counsel in Department of Local Government, as a matter of fact, I was texting with him this morning. Um, I'll reach out to him, let's see here what it says. It may be that we can do a, uh, an interlocal agreement, we'll find out, if we can, we'll get that done. Um, and make sure that, uh, we're, we're doing it in compliance with the law. Anything else that you all want to point out to the court?
Anybody got any questions?
I have a lot of questions. Uh, you know, um.
Do we have any answers?
Some of these questions, there may not be an answer to. Um, yeah, it's just gonna take a lot of work, and I appreciate what you all done, Randy, particularly with your engineering expertise, and Johnny with your uh, accounting background, I think that Mountain Water's in good shape right now in terms of the board members. Um, I know a lot of work has been done, and I know Johnny, you put a lot of work into trying to dig into the finances and, and, you know, even down to getting a cash flow statement, how's the cash flow for the district look right now? Is it stable?
Based on our budget, our, our cash flow is, you know, we're projecting a three hundred thousand dollar surplus, but, you know, that's such a conservative budget that we're not able to, number one, we're not able to put back any money. Uh, number two, we're not able to go out and rehab like the tanks and the other items that needs to be rehabbed. And until we get additional funding, uh, that, we're stuck. I mean, we're making major progress, I think David Taylor has done an excellent job in reducing our water loss. And, uh, I think the way they have accomplished that is through the pandemic, they took another crew off of repairs.
We did a day, we did a day shift.
Done a day shift, and, and David has been able with, with the instruments they use to find those water losses, my understanding is at night is the prime time because they're very, uh, sound sensitive. During the day, you've got traffic, you've got all kinds of noise, and they're, they're finding tremendous amount of these service line leaks, which are hard, hard to find on kind of the noise that they generate. Uh, and, and they, like Randy said, you know, we, we've made tremendous amount of progress. I mean, we're down to twenty six.
Under twenty-eight percent, look, about twenty-seven and a half.
Twenty-seven and a half percent for the year.
That's down substantially.
It's, it's.
Lost thirty-eight.
It's, it's a, it's a major improvement.
Well, I mean, you know, I've always said, if you're losing, you know, I don't care what business it is, if you're losing a third of your product to loss, you're not gonna stay in business long.
You're not. And, and, and the problem is, you know, we've had to buy excess water from the city of Wimson and Pikeville, and that costs, you know, our, our customers basically money.
I saw something, and I can't remember exactly where it was, but did about a hundred million dollars has gone into the capital construction of Mountain Water's assets, ninety-four or five million dollars. And, you know, when you put that kind of infrastructure in place, it costs money to maintain it.
Absolutely.
Things wear out, lines deteriorate, lift stations have to be refurbished or replaced. Uh, water treatment plants have to be upgraded, maintained. Uh, it's a lot of infrastructure, Roy, how many miles of lines does Mountain Water have?
Close to twelve hundred.
So, you know, we've got, you've got twelve hundred miles of lines, we've got thousand miles of roads, and it costs money to maintain that infrastructure, whether it's a road or, you know, this courthouse, we've had to spend, this courthouse is, 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 is an aging building, we've had to spend a lot of money on it. The problem is, most of these governments, particularly counties, were so dependent on coal severance. And even Mountain Water was dependent on coal severance, a lot of money that, even when I was in the legislature, that was, went into Mountain Water was coal severance. Now that that money's not there, it's putting even more pressure on the, the counties and quasi-governmentals because no money was ever set aside to maintain that infrastructure.
And, and, and that's the problem, you know, we, we, we get additional funding, you know, the governor came and presented us with the one point seven to extend, extend water lines. So there's more structure that's gonna be aging, that did not go into trying to rehab the existing forty or fifty year structures that we've got.
So, so it would be my recommendation, and I'll make the motion here, that if the legislature allocates additional money to Pike County or water projects, of course, that's gonna have to be, you know, divided between the city of Pikeville's infrastructure, Elkhorn City, and Mountain Water. That any money that Mountain Water can acquire through that process or through the federal infrastructure bill, instead of, before we do any other additional line extensions, that we start addressing some of the infrastructure needs. Would you all be agreeable to that?
Absolutely.
What about, what's your else thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, you still got, we do need to work on the infrastructure, but you still got people in certain areas that need water also. You know, I mean.
You know, the, the big problem is that with, you know, most of our water line extensions were done with coal severance, is that.
That's correct.
You know, some money was borrowed from, um, from rural development, I guess, and, and KIA, um, but, you know, the big thing is, if you don't, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, if you don't take care of the infra, the aging infrastructure now, you may not be able to put, even if you do a line extension, you may not be able to put water into it.
That's correct.
And that's a huge problem. And, you know, the, uh, the fact that, you know, Mountain Water, the public needs to understand this, is dependent on cooperation with two other districts to make Mountain Water work the way it was set up. The public may not be aware of this, and this has been the way it's been done since inception. We have to work with the city of Pikeville because a significant portion of the water, uh, that Mountain Water sells comes from the city of Pikeville. Significant portion comes from, from Williamson, significant portion is made by the water district's plan. And I know at some point that, that the board would like to be self-sufficient, and I think the way that the district gets more self-sufficient is to reduce the water loss.
That's correct.
Absolutely correct.
No. Go ahead.
We've, uh, we did get the board's approval, we did hire additional staff at recent, that's made a, a, a very large impact for us. So we've had to put on additional crew, so it has helped us a whole lot.
We, we have crews working on those water loss, that's, that's the reason it's reduced, but what's happened is then the normal repairs and maintenance have been neglected. We, our whole theory behind, when, when Randy and I and some of the new board members, the first thing that we wanted to attack was water loss. It's like Judge said, you, you can't run a business losing thirty per, seven percent of your product. So they've made substantial improvements in that, but due to our limited resources, we don't have the funds to do our normal repairs and maintenance, just like the tanks.
The Public Service Commission regulations want water district water loss to be no more than fifteen percent. At one time, you were more than two times that limit. And like, I think Randy said thirty-eight percent, I think it got, in Martin County, it got up in the sixty-some percent. And, you know, if you're at thirty-eight percent and you don't start addressing it and investing in your, in, in that, fixing that problem, then pretty soon you're in the forties and then you're in the fifties, I mean, because that infrastructure is aging.
And then everybody's gonna lose water.
And then, then you're gonna go at, you know, the risk of going to the spigot and turning it on, um, and not having water gets even greater, I mean, we had a big water mi- main break, uh, back last year down below my house. Um, so, I mean, we've, one of the other issues that Fabian brought up is it will be helpful, you know, we're, we try to work with Mountain Water when we have to do a drain relocation or something like that. And, uh, we had a crew up on Peak, was it Pico Hollow? Uh, and we took a drain out to move, to put a new drain in, and the, the Mountain Water crew identified where they thought the line was, and we dug in another place and hit the line. A lot of times, I think that when these lines, the, the, the lines are replaced, it needs to be mapped, some of the locations of these lines, when these contractors put them in over the years, were never mapped. And it would seem to me to be helpful if we had an actual mapping program that when lines were put in, where lines were replaced, that we mapped it and marked them.
We have ass builds.
Say it again.
We have ass builds, that means it's, they were drawn up after the completion of the project, supposed to be accurately drawn.
Well, we found out over at Fabian, I'll tell you, that's not been the case, we've had.
We had that happen in Open Fork too.
You may run into the situation that somebody's had to replace a line or do something else that maybe not have updated the maps. Who knows, it may be a stretch that they've had to replace five hundred or six hundred feet around a, a, a drain or something and, and, uh, forgot to mark it on a map or relocate it on a map since it was just so small. You may run in that situation, but we do have.
We wanted to point that out because, uh, it was, it's been a problem, we've ran into a couple of different places that the, that, you know, that they couldn't identify exactly where the water lines were, and so, um, but we'll know more, and I'd like to work with, uh, with you all, uh, we'll get with Senator Wheeler and our leg, or House delegate, or House delegation to discuss any, uh, water funding that may be, uh, coming down. But I do think we're gonna see some more money, and like I said, I think it all needs to be dedicated to the infrastructure problems.
It's like Marbone, Marbone right now is probably close around fifty years old.
Well, you know, the Mountain Water District, I, I think was formed in nineteen eighty-six or something along those lines, Roy.
Eighty-six or eighty-eight, somewhere in there.
Somewhere through there, but the, the systems that merged into it were the Belfry system, the Shelby Valley system, and the Marbone system.
You had, uh, I think you had Johns Creek, Con Creek, Marbone, and Ch- and Shelbyina.
Okay, so you had three or four systems, and some of that infrastructure is probably older than I am. I mean, I think some of that infrastructure is probably over fifty years old, and it's just never been replaced, so. But we're gonna work with you to get it done. Randy, appreciate you, Johnny, Roy, appreciate you all.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Um, let me, let me throw this out at you. There are a few, we, we are getting some calls on some water, some areas that are not served by wa- by, by Mountain Water right now, where people are really in desperate need of public water. What recommendations, Roy, do you have to us where we could maybe help first fix the infrastructure indoor, you know, one A and one B, you know, trying to, to, to help some of these folks who are in, in desperate need of water?
Uh, you're talking about line extensions?
Line extensions, there are some areas.
I would recommend someone in the community to come up with a petition for the waters and, and get names, addresses, phone numbers, and bring it to the district, and the district can work up a, uh, estimate or a budget for the project and submit it to you all.
Okay.
I had one, I gave Roy this morning, I talked to him about, was in the, uh, right fork of, uh, Hurricane, Opelstoke. I've had several people, the left fork's got city water, the main road's got city water, but the right fork has no water.
You know, some of those smaller extensions shouldn't be that difficult to do. Obviously, the big one we're getting ready to do is over in Brushy and Sycamore, and, um, that's gonna be a big project, I think probably two and a half million dollars or so, Roy, I think is what we.
Yes, the, uh, I'm trying to think now, the high cost of that one, it's two, two point four, two point five maybe?
Yeah.
To get Brushy and Sycamore, it'd get a hundred and, no, excuse me, sixty, what was it, sixty-nine customers?
What, what percentage of the public in Pike County that serve, in the areas served by Mountain Water? Uh, what percentage of the folks would you think they're up to, uh, having access to public water?
I'd say we're in the ninety-some percentile.
So, i- 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 just from my time in the legislature, it always seemed that the areas that didn't have it were the areas that would be just super expensive to do.
Yeah.
And, and like, uh, the Sycamore and Brushy's, two and a half million dollars to get it to a hundred and sixty-nine customers? I didn't even know it was that many, it was.
No, I think it was sixty-nine customers.
Sixty, is it sixty-nine?
Yeah.
That's a lot of money, and, uh, that's some of the problems that we've run into is.
The, the, this is the problem we've got at Island Creek too, Peach Orchard, you know? That, that line's gonna have to be completely redone, uh, from what I understand, what Roy tells it from the mouth of the hollow. I mean, for, it's a big dollar.
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen some projects like that before, we did a project one time years ago on Fed's Creek, they, A M L paid for, and they run a, A M L, uh, had us run a mile of line to cover like three homes. And it was du- ductile, if I remember right, at that time, or PVC, both.
I mean, some of these projects are just astronomically expensive to do.
Yeah, and you get into replacing the lines right now, I mean, just depends on whether it's PVC or ductile. You're probably looking anywhere from, currently right now, depends on how big it is, could range anywhere from twenty-five to forty-five a foot. You know, and that's pretty expensive when you start putting it in.
I've got a family in, in District Two that, uh, was getting their, uh, water from a coal bank. There's a slide come in, underway with the water. And, uh, their house caught on fire and they lost their house to it, but the water runs so far up the hollow where they live, so that's something we probably need to look into on that. I think, I think from the, where the water stops, there's seven or eight more houses in that hollow.
They, they need to do the petition and get it to.
But we've done done it, it's done been.
You know, it, it also come down to the district doesn't have the funds, and they're gonna have to, you know, again, hopefully this federal infrastructure bill is gonna put a bunch of money into our rural water districts. So only these projects will probably get done. All right, is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Mountain Water District budget for the calendar year January first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two?
Motion.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tack, any other question or discussion? C, now, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tack?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Gentlemen, thank you all. Um, we also have an adoption of resolution regarding easements for use of county property for the Maynard Fork Water Supply Line Project, Brushy, Brushy Creek, Sycamore Waterline Extension Project and Fish Trap Hydraulic Modification Project. Is there a motion to adopt, um, or to approve, uh, the easements?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion?
How, how, how much longer would it be before we get started on the Maynard Fork project? We heard anything from them, Sharon? I know we, we've been talking about this for a couple of years. Like I had to count how many craw deads or something was in the creek or something?
Yes, I'm still waiting on the environmental assessment to be reviewed. Um, I asked permission to go ahead and bid the project and just don't award it. And I got a letter this, I got an email this morning and said, no, absolutely not. Until they finish that environmental review and give us a notice of funding and a letter of conditions, they won't let us.
So what, how much did that cost Sharon?
Pardon me?
How much did that craw dead deal cost?
Oh no, we didn't do a craw, we didn't have to do a craw dead deal. The problem is rural development doesn't have staff to do all the projects. They're having to do, administer projects for ARC. Maynard Fork is an ARC project. They don't administer construction projects, so rural development's doing it. And they just don't have staff. We just, I don't know what to do. Unless somebody can ask them to hire more people. But I talked to Teresa Shields from Rural Development this morning and she said, no, you cannot do that.
How, how long are we, you think we're looking at before we get started on this thing?
Ninety days. That's pretty much what she said in that email. She said it could be up to ninety days. Which is a shame because that puts us a year after we were invited to get the money.
Have we, uh, as a bid put, been, we, so we've procured summit for the, for the engineering, correct?
Yes, uh-huh.
Plans, it's the, the, the design is done.
Yes.
They are ready to go, Judge.
Yeah, they're ready to go. We went, that's why we went ahead and got easements.
We've not put the bid out yet though.
No, they wouldn't let me.
So you can't put it out until it's approved.
Right. And they first told us back in September and August that we could not do the environmental assessment ourself. Rural Development had to do it. Well, Rural Development wouldn't do it, said they didn't have staff to do it. So I went ahead and done it and they said, that's okay. You know, with our assistance and other people. So that was submitted back in December. Still hasn't even been reviewed.
Who has to review that?
Teresa Shields just said our office or environmental coordinator.
In Rural Development?
Yes, in Rural Development.
Who, who did the environmental study or?
I did. I just took their, uh, requirements. They sent me, uh, a checklist, email, what you have to do. And it's standard, it's like you do any other environmental assessment. And I did it and everything was fine. The three big that they worry about that they cite, you know, you have to have clearance from fish and wildlife, from, uh, historical preservation. We got all of those within a week or two. Everything was great. We're just waiting on somebody to do something.
What about, uh, and we've still got Roy here, what about our Brushy Sycamore? Where are we at on that one?
I think the problem right there is KIA has not made all of the announcements on the allocations. They're making two and three announcements a day, the governor's office is. When they finish up all of those announcements on the entire state of Kentucky's allocation, every county, every city, then they'll start working on, well, they're working on the letter of conditions now. So we can't proceed until we get our letter of conditions. And KIA has hired somebody to help them do that, which you guys know Roger Recton Wall.
So what we're waiting on too is to see whether we get any money out of the, money out of the fifty million dollar pool for unserved areas.
Or underfunded, we asked for both.
Or the forty-nine million plus pool for, uh, projects that were over.
Yeah, underfunded, yes.
Underfunded, unserved or underfunded.
Right.
So, um, and they've not, you know, we've had that in there for probably close to a year.
A long time, yes.
It would be quite a year, but it would have been shortly after the last session, I would think, back in late spring, so.
Yeah, April.
All right.
They just needed help. They're getting the help now, but it's just a slow process. I just hope the public understands that we can get money, it's just getting the funding agencies to administer the money.
Well, we've been very successful getting grant money for projects, money for bridges, roads, water, sewer, industrial sites. We've, we've been able to get a lot of money, but there are hoops that we have to jump through.
Right.
Before we can start the projects or spend the money. So.
Correct.
We didn't create the rules, but we do have to live with them and, you know, uh, they're gonna pay, it's gonna pay off. It may just be a little longer than, than what, but if we can get Maynard Fork started in the next ninety days, that would be good.
Yeah, I, well, we just, what I asked him was can we go ahead and bid it and then hold up awarding the project? And she said, no. I was just gonna have it ready.
All right, just have it, so you'll be, it will be ready for bidding as soon as we.
Yeah, we're ready to go as soon as they clear the environmental.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, any other question or discussion? We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett and a second by Commissioner Robertson. See, no other question or discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Mr. Fannin?
We had a bid opening on January twenty-fifth on bid number zero-one dash two-zero-two-two-four-two, two thousand twenty-two Crew Camp Trucks. Uh, we received one bid, it was from Bruce Walters Ford. They bid on one of the trucks, their bid price was forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Truck meets all the specifications that were in the bid package and they have only one truck available. It's my recommendation that we award the bid to Bruce Walters Ford for the one truck for bid price of forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Is there a motion to award a bid to Bruce Walters Ford for a twenty twenty-two Crew Cab truck for the price of forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars? A motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion? See, now Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth? Judge Jones?
All right, any other business, sir?
No, that's all, Judge, thank you.
We only got a bid for one truck, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Are the bi- the trucks just not out there to be had?
They're just not out there and, and, and another thing, um, the way we have to do our bid packs, you know, I've been able to locate some that are a couple of hundred miles away from here that would do us. Most of these vehicles you find right now like that, they're wanting anywhere from three to eight thousand dollars above MSRP for the truck. We were able to buy this truck about twenty-five hundred dollars under MSRP. I just noticed that it was becoming available. And, uh, I started discussing with them and put out this bid package. But what happens is even these trucks that are a couple of hundred miles away, if it's something we can use and we decide we wanna pay over MSRP for it, you know, I tell them, look, if I decide, you know, that we want this truck, I have to do a bid package, advertise it for seven days and all that. They said, sir, this truck won't be here in seven days. So it's really kinda put us in a bind. Uh, now by doing a bid package for two trucks and just one of has been filled, that, that opens us to do a competitive negotiation and buy another similar two thousand twenty-two Crew Cab truck. So I will get on that and see what else I can find.
I just have a hard time paying that kind of money over MSRP, um, on a vehicle.
We passed up a truck two or three months ago, uh, that we've could have used because they wanted MSRP for it. We were always used to, you know, getting eight or ten thousand dollars off MSRP. We passed that truck up. Uh, this truck here is a truck, I went over all the specs with Fabian on this truck and this is a truck that he can use. And we're able to buy it twenty-five hundred dollars under MSRP. That's not as much as we're used to getting off of trucks. But it's about, that's about the best we can find right now.
Well, hopefully this, you know, computer chip shortage is gonna fix itself here in the next few months. And, uh, maybe by summer, fall, we'll be back to where we can actually buy a vehicle without having to, you know, to pay over MSRP.
Hopefully.
This is short wheelbase truck?
Pardon?
This is short wheelbase truck.
Uh, it's a Crew Cab short bed, yeah, I think it's a six and a half foot bed.
Yeah.
What about the, uh, truck we lost in the flood? Has insurance come through on that or?
Probably, that's probably a justing question.
That's another truck that we'll have to replace.
Is it gonna be a total loss? It was at one, at one of our new trucks, correct?
Yes, it's, and we've got the soldering piles, that's one of our salt trucks pickups. That's something that, you know, if you're just, I mean, time you got it here, it might be too late, but you don't know how long it's gonna snow or how late it's gonna be bad weather. But that's something, if it's two thousand dollars over its RP, it might be worth looking at replacing.
I don't know which this other truck that he bid, what it's, what the specs on it were, if it was short wheel, or short, uh.
This, this is a Crew Cab six and a half foot bed truck. I, I think pretty much, uh, this truck was gonna be designated for Fabian to use. Um, I think we had in the budget a truck for Larry at the landfill. Um, uh, Fabian wasn't needing a Crew Cab truck when his is like a double cab or an extended cab truck. I think, uh, what we've kinda decided to do was try to find Fabian a Crew Cab truck and take Fabian's truck, which is just two, three years old, I think, and give that to Larry at the landfill to use, which would be fine for him. Uh, but we, we do still need several other trucks.
I mean, Fabian's truck's not real well-suited for the work he does. It's just, it's, you know, that cab is too small on it. Um, particularly, you know, for instance, if he has to take people out, we had Thima up here last week, if he's gotta take people out, you really can't put but one other person in that truck without being, you know, just pressed into it.
Right.
And I also was gonna ask, is it possible to put a blade on Fabian's truck if we needed to? That was one of the other things that he had mentioned to me was, you know, where he can go out and help plow and stuff and we have these, uh, these, uh, you know, these weather events, that way we could equip his truck, would be another truck that, that will be, uh, that we could put out for snow removal.
I get what I, maybe you didn't understand me, what I'm talk, what I was asking was, is one of those trucks that was out there that you found that maybe was twenty-five hundred dollar over invoice, would that meet the qualification of the truck we lost in the flood?
It, it was not, I don't think it's the heavy-duty F-three-fifty.
The, the, I think, if I'm not mistaken, right, the truck that we lost was one of the F-three-fifty diesels with the eight-foot bed.
Yeah.
There's not a whole lot of trucks out there. I just, you know, I, daily I get on those sites and try to see what's out there. And, and most of the time, you know, if I do find something that's similar, by the time I bid it, it sold. And that's what they tell me when I talk to them, but I'll, I'll continue to try to find something else for us. There was a, there was a dealer that we bought some trucks off of last year that told me, I know that you're in need of some more F-three-fifty, uh, regular cab trucks. This was two or three months ago. He said, I'm gonna go ahead and put a commercial order in. He said, you know, if General Motors, or Ford picks these up and builds these trucks, you know, you're not obligated, uh, I can dealer trade them if I need to. But hopefully, uh, at some point before too long, I'll have three trucks in like that if you need them.
Is that something, since we know the truck's gonna be totaled, that we should go ahead and bid out? And that a way if something like that comes available, instead of waiting, we've already had it bided out, we could just go ahead and purchase it?
I don't have a problem doing that.
I mean, if they're, if they're that scarce to get, I mean, looks to me like that'd be something we should go ahead and do since we know the truck's gonna be totaled and covered by insurance. That a way it gives Greg an opportunity when the truck is out there, we've done had it approved. And he can go ahead and purchase the truck.
How many trucks are we needing?
I think we had in our capital budget, uh, we had the truck for Larry in the capital budget, but I think we also had three regular cab F-three-fifties with the loss of this other truck.
That's four.
That would make four, from what I understand.
Didn't the last time we bought six? We just, we bid six trucks and we got like two from one, one dealership, two from the other, or one from wherever. Could we do that again and just let it run till we filled that? Is that how that worked, Frankie, or?
I mean.
I'm not saying six, buy six trucks right now, but I, I think that's the way we done it last time.
Fabian had a saw, a snowplow, I guess it was on the Belcher lot, that we've had the steering linkage come undone twice in it. And I'm talking about when it came undone, no steering. And it was fixed once and I've told Fabian that that truck is not to be put on the road again until we have assurances that it is completely safe to do that. I don't, did they find out what caused that, Fabian?
Yeah, I talked to Darren, he says it's, uh, the rubber bushing. He actually said it was a, a, a flaw in the manufacturer.
But, uh, he says that anytime any oil drips down on that bushing, it deteriorates it, cause it's rubber, it's not metal to metal. And that was what happened and what had caused this. And, uh, like I said, that, that truck was just fixed last year with the same problem. So it's not even, well, been a year and it's happened again.
Same thing happened right after Christmas, last year, uh, Christmas of twenty twenty. We had the same truck. Steering went completely out. Year later it does the same thing.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I want that.
Well, now, uh, Darren was going to, uh, he actually was gonna check with the manufacturer today to see if there was any other permanent fixes out there for that truck.
Was that a new truck?
No.
No, no, this is a fifteen truck.
I guess what I'm saying, what Brian was talking about, we go ahead and let, uh, go, go ahead and bid whatever trucks we need. And as, as they come in, we, we take them.
I mean, I think you, I just go ahead and bid four or six more and see.
By the way, he don't have to wait.
Right.
I, I would because just like the truck you're just talking, you know, if, if we can't get this truck back in service, it would need to be replaced fairly soon. Because the, the truck itself is, is getting old. I mean, it's showing some signs.
Fifteen?
Yeah, it's a fifteen. It, it would need to be replaced, that's what I'm saying. So I mean, that would, it would make sense if we could do something.
I mean, the, the useful life of some of these trucks, we're way past the useful life on some of them who have, you know.
Well, especially, especially the pickups you put for me, uh, which I know Solid Waste could have the same argument. But now we put them through, we put them through everything that they're designed to go through, I'll promise you that.
Well, that's from here, the insurance is gonna cover it, so it's, it's, you know.
Yeah, but what Mr. Tackett was saying was also true, if we went ahead and bid those others out.
We need more trucks. I mean, it's, some of these older trucks need to be replaced.
I think we ought to go ahead and get Greg, put a bid out, four, six, whatever you want. You buy what you need, that a way you don't have to wait seven days for the.
Make, make the motion.
I'll make a motion.
Wait, wait, we can't do it, wait, wait, we can't do it, cause we're in, uh, we're special meeting, not regular meeting. But Greg can go ahead and get the bid package ready.
I can. I think our original intent a couple of years ago was buy two new trucks for each lot. If I'm not mistaken, we've bought nine so far. That leaves us three short, plus the truck that we lost, we'll make four. Now that's the F-three-fifty long bed diesel trucks.
Put a bid out for four.
When, when does our, uh, thick, swivel go and get the blade put on?
Uh, I was, I was actually informed today that those, that truck would, should be ready to pick up tomorrow. Uh, and if so, then, uh, I'm going to go ahead and take all three. All, or remaining three, take those over tomorrow and then pick up that one.
Well, anyway, why don't you just go ahead and get a, a bid package put out? Answer. See what we do.
We all right, we have a ice storm this weekend? Would we be okay if we have a ice storm this weekend?
Yeah, we, we, yeah.
If you have an ice storm this weekend, if you have an ice storm this weekend.
It's gonna be tough regardless.
These aren't ice trucks. I mean, these, these trucks are gonna have as much trouble getting out as any other truck on the road.
We still manage a way to do it most of the time. But now you're right, we do, I mean, that ice is a whole different ballgame than the snow removal, ice removal is.
If we get half an inch of, if we get half an inch of ice, it's gonna be really, really hard for the road departments to, to address that.
Well, actually I would, uh, I, we would have to pre-treat and then we would have to wait until the temperature rose before I would put anyone out there on the road. Because at that point, you're just as, those trucks are just as vulnerable as any other truck out there. There's nothing made for that ice.
Right, and that's the problem is with pre-treating it, it's supposedly be a ton of rain.
Yeah, so you have to catch it just right. I mean, you know, uh, and then we are, we've got a limited amount of salt right now and we're not able to, uh, get our salt orders in the way that, uh, we hoped or thought that we would. Uh, so we're still working on our first order that we placed this year is still not being completely filled yet.
Can we check on that?
Another order behind. We check daily on that. We check daily. We check daily on that. We check daily on, on our salt, on our salt situation. I mean, we have enough salt to handle it, uh, to handle it, but that's with no spare, that's with no reserves, you know? And that's one thing, like I talked before, and I, I don't mean to be long-winded, but we really do need to get that, uh, the salt bin built up there so we could have a storage, so that when something like this comes up, we have, we have a reserve.
Ike's having to travel all the way back to the airport to get salt for Ford Mountain and Brushy, and it's twenty-some miles down through there if you go all the way down. So we absolutely have to get that salt bin put up.
Yeah, I agree. We really do need to.
Paul, what's the status of that? Are we just waiting on it, or spring, or what? Did we authorize?
Well, we was gonna say about contractors, about contractors.
Yeah, we had, last we spoke, I thought we had talked about maybe just contracting that out. I thought that's where we were at. But we, uh, we've got the location picked out, but never the, uh, actual plans.
We're waiting on a design set up.
Waiting on the specs and the design to be able to bid it out.
Yeah, we can't build it till we know how.
Exactly.
Okay. I sent, well, I sent Fabian some pictures of the one that the city's got up here. Looked pretty good then, I feel.
Yeah, but remember, Greg, it would, last time, I think we had brought this up, we had talked about maybe doing some kind of a canvas top and, uh, you remember?
Doing what, I'm sorry?
A canvas, like the canvas dome, remember we talked about, that was brought, the last time we talked about it. I, from what I understand, you were kind of against that, and we kind of designed, decided to go with a design similar to what UMG has with eight or ten foot concrete walls and like a metal building on top. Yes, that's exactly right.
Yeah, we need to, we need to get those specs and get on that. I mean, so we have it leased for next year.
Yeah.
Will, any other business, sir?
That'll be all. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Well, now, we're, we're gonna take, turn to something, uh, on a little more positive note. We have a distinguished public servant who is retiring after twenty-seven years as the emergency management director, nine-one-one coordinator, and, uh, GIS director. And, um, you know, Doug Tackett has done, he's really single-handedly created emergency management in Pike County. And I'll say it for the last time, um, uh, during, uh, during, uh, Doug's tenure, he has been recognized as the best emergency management director in Kentucky. And he's been with this county through everything, from train derailments to plane crashes to hazardous chemical spills, to floods, snowstorms, um, through a pandemic. And, um, the people of this county owe a tremendous debt of gratitude to Doug. And even before he went to work in, um, emergency management, Doug has exhibited a life of public service. When I was a little boy, uh, growing up in Shelby Valley, there was no such thing as a volunteer fire department. Anita knows what I'm talking about. Uh, Doug's better half Anita. We all grew up on Indian Creek. And, you know, at one time, if your house caught on fire, there was no fire department. And Doug, um, helped start the React program, which was, uh, using CB radios as a, as a way to early, early emergency communications. And then, um, worked to help create the volunteer fire department at Shelby Valley. I guess served as chief for a period of time at, at the Shelby Valley Volunteer Fire Department, and then ran Shelby Valley Ambulance Service. Um, you know, what Doug's done for people and the lives he's touched, the lives he's saved, the people he's helped during, uh, you know, so many trying times, it's just untold. There's no way to put into words, Doug, what you've done to help so many people, my family included. And, uh, you're gonna be missed, um, when Doug told me that, uh, he was getting ready to leave. You know, i- it's always comforting when we're having to deal with an emergency. Uh, you know, whether particularly a flood, cause we never know what, what's gonna happen. Uh, and, um, you know, we all know that there have been a lot of lives lost in floods in Pike County and eastern Kentucky over the years. When we have these things happen, you know, when I got called about the train derailment. And, uh, you know, it's always good to know that you've got somebody with Doug's, uh, experience and his wisdom standing beside you when you're sitting there having to deal with these things. And, um, he spent a lot of nights in that emergency operations center. Uh, people have no idea. Uh, we have absolutely one of the best emergency management departments in Kentucky because of what you've done. When I was in the legislature, Doug, you know, would call me frequently about getting funding for things like, uh, uh, s- you know, uh, gauges to monitor some of our, uh, streams and creeks and things that we would, uh, were needed to make Pike County safer. Uh, the rave alert system that we're, you know, always encouraging people to sign up for. That's something Doug came up with. Um, and, uh, you know, we have a, a top-notch nine-one-one program in Pike County. We have an outstanding GIS office that, you know, all of our departments, Solid Waste, the road department, the sheriff's office, um, clerk's office, all depend on that GIS office, and they've done a remarkable job. But, uh, Nee Jackson is gonna have some big shoes to fill, and I think he knows that, and I think he's up to the task. Um, but, uh, you know, when you talk to people around Kentucky that are in emergency management, they all know Doug. And they all know that, uh, that he is one of the deans of, uh, of the emergency management industry in Kentucky because, you know, emergency management directors across the state look to Doug. And I told Doug he was going out with a, with a bang. I mean, you know, Doug spent, uh, and Nee spent two weeks in western Kentucky helping with the storm recovery after the tornadoes in December. You know, Doug and Nee were, were two of the first ones to volunteer to go. Um, and, y- you know, dealing with now a flood and more, uh, adverse weather events. Uh, it looks like Doug may miss the ice storm that's, that's coming in, though. But he did say to me that he's only, always just a phone call away. And that just shows that even in retirement, that Doug's gonna be willing to help if we need him. One of the things that, that Doug has championed, that, uh, he's been a huge advocate for our fire service. Uh, a lot of our volunteer fire departments would not be at the level they are right now if Doug had not been advocating for the fire service and working to help the fire service. Um, so it's, it's not been just nine-one-one emergency management, GIS. He's, Doug's done it pretty much all. Um, and, uh, Doug, again, we owe you a tremendous debt of gratitude. I hope that you and Anita enjoy your retirement. Um, but the last big accomplishment, I think, that needs to be mentioned is Doug worked for years, last several years to replace this aging radio system that our volunteer fire departments and first responders use. Uh, it was a twenty-two-year-old radio system, and Doug worked with Motorola to save the taxpayers over two hundred thousand dollars. He advocated strongly to this court that we needed to make that investment. Uh, fortunately, we're in a financial position to do that. Three years ago, we wouldn't have been in a position to do that. But that radio system is gonna be so important to our fire service and first responders over the next twenty years. And Doug, you can rest assured that, you know, that radio system may not have been a reality if you hadn't worked for it, uh, lobbied to get a better price for the county and, and made sure that the members of the court understood how important that was. So, uh, again, enjoy retirement, and, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, anyone else before we ask you to come up and Anita to come up and say a few words. Any, anybody on the court have anything they'd like to add or say?
Oh, he's, Doug's gonna be missed, ain't no doubt about it. We're just, you know, we're glad you, though, that you said you would come around if we need you. So if Nee needs any help or whatever, and all, he can just give you a phone call, get you right back here.
I guess I'm just glad to be a, here to be a part of this. I, I've known Doug my whole life. I'd be happy to call him cousin and what all he's done for, for Pike County. Congratulations. We, we, we'll miss you.
I just wanna thank you, Doug, for the service you've gave this county. And, uh, I was really proud of you to get these new firemen and stuff, these new radios. They put their life on the line all the time for us, and if it wasn't for you, we probably wouldn't have that. So, I wanna thank you, and, uh, we might call you back when we need you.
Let's hope we don't need, uh. Nee, would you like to come up and say a few words?
While Nee's coming up, let me say this, that in the face of chaos, he's one of the calmest guys you'll ever be around. And that's a trait that is, uh, so required, so important for the position that you've had, Doug. And you, you wore it well, buddy, and I appreciate everything you've done.
Um, I, I'd also, um, which, you know, Doug and I've, uh, gotten to spend a look, a lot more time together, uh, the last few months. But, um, you know, I appreciate the fact that, uh, he's kinda put me under his wing, uh, he's mentored me. Um, we've worked together, um, throughout the years, and, um, he's been a great asset, uh, to our county and to the counties throughout the state. Uh, like you said, um, I've had the fortune to be able to travel a lot throughout the state, uh, working with different emergency management organizations. And, um, he is, uh, heralded as the best emergency management director in the state of Kentucky, um, hands down. And, um, from here to Marshall County, you know, he's, he's got a lot of respect. Uh, when we, when we went out there, um, they put him with the emergency management director out there that was fairly new emergency management director. And he mentored him through, uh, the process out there with that relief. So, um, you know, it was, it was really good for him, uh, to be able to take, uh, from somebody with Doug's experience, uh, to be able to lead him through that, uh, process out there. So, that just goes to show you what, um, what Doug means statewide, uh, to a lot of the people in emergency management. Um, he's, he's been a, a huge asset for this camp Commonwealth.
I agree. Doug, why don't you and Anita come on up and say a few words? And, and, um, then we have a little presentation for you. Anita, welcome.
Don't hardly know what to say, really. Uh, it's been an eventful twenty-seven years, no doubt, because we've had almost as many disasters as I've had years here. Uh, I think about twenty-some altogether now. And, uh, it's been some experience, it really has. It's been life-changing at times.
Well, you've done, um, you probably are one of the most experienced people in emergency management in Kentucky. And it's a testament to what we've had to deal with in this county. But the one thing, from administration to administration, from Judge Dameron to Judge Gibson, Judge Rutherford, Judge Deskins, now myself, the one constant that we've always had is we've had somebody that was cool under pressure, that could think. And, you know, in times of, uh, when there has been a disaster, you know, you're the guy that's been in charge. And you've done it right, and, uh.
Well, it's been a long time, and there's, there's very few emergency management directors that have the career like I've had to be, uh, in office after every court. A lot of them don't see that duration. Um, this is one of the few, uh, positions that the judge has, that a judge can appoint, and you serve at the pleasure of the judge. And to serve so many judges throughout the years is, is a testament, I guess. It's, it's unheard of in a lot of places.
Well, I think it speaks a lot of you. Republican administration, Democrat administration. Um, everybody that's held this office has recognized, uh, what you mean and what you know, and how important it is to have somebody. And, um, I wanna say this, when, um, when you told me that you're retiring, one of the first questions I think I asked you was, who should be the next one?
Yes.
And I think simultaneously, we both, uh, said, Nee Jackson. And that's who I would have, uh, that would have been my pick, and that was your pick. And, um, even though we're gonna miss you, I think we're leaving you, leaving, uh, Pike County, uh, in good hands.
I think so.
And, uh, so, uh, I hope, uh, so what are your retirement plans? What are the, what are the plans?
Well, we're trying to set up a new home right now, so we'll work on that as the weather allows, and then hopefully we get to do some traveling.
Well, I wish you both much happiness and, uh, much enjoyment in retirement. And, uh, I'm sure that you'll be down to see us and.
Yes, I will.
Congratulations.
As I've always said, if you need me, call me. I'm just a phone call away.
Well, I hope that we don't need you, but if we do, I can assure you, we will.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
You have anything you wanna say?
I wanna say, not only has Doug worked tirelessly for this county, but he cares about it. He cares about the people here. He cares about everything. He just has a servant's heart. And he was meant for the job that he did. So, I love him.
We all love him too. Now, I go back with him a long way from the time that I could, as long as I can remember, I've known Doug. And I probably, when I was four or five, was aggravating him like I did everybody else, like I did Reggie. Um, and it's a wonder that they didn't, didn't trouble me when I was little. Um, but, you know, I, I, I just grew up admiring what Doug did. And, um, you know, we had the ambulance service, and we had, you know, uh, illness in the family or, uh, I, I never will forget when, uh, one of my cousins was killed in a car wreck. Uh, you know, Doug was there, and, uh, those are things you don't forget. And, uh, it's much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you.
Doug, I'd like to ask some members of the court, Mr. Kane and Judge Hickman to join me down front. Janey, if you would send me that photograph, I'd appreciate it. All right, now we have the Pike County Road Supervisor's report and approval of the county commissioner's recommended work, uh, list or work orders. Uh, still a pretty good-sized list. I'd like to remind everyone that this, uh, list will be published on Pike TV so that the public will see what work has been done by our road crews and also, uh, what work orders are, uh, you know, in, in the pipeline to be done. Fabian, you have anything, uh, for the court?
Uh, the only thing that I would have, Judge, would be, uh, I know I use this word, I say it a lot, but, I mean, be patient with us on this flood damage. We have fought snow almost every day through January. Uh, there was very few days that we wasn't dealing with, uh, it, snow in some way. So that has hindered us quite a bit in, in this flood damage. So that has hindered us quite a bit in, in this flood damage and working. Hopefully it will let up and we can get back on that and, and get some of this stuff fixed.
We appreciate it. And we appreciate what the road crews have done because.
Oh, well, one other thing.
They've had their hands full.
Oh, yeah. One other thing that I would like to say is too, is if you watch me at all, if the road has a, a yellow line, it's a state road. So try not to bark at, try not to bark at me too much over a state road.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because, you know, a lot of times, I would encourage anyone that's listening or watching this, or that might read about it in our local newspaper, that instead of going on Facebook and jumping onto the county or the road department about a road, we can't fix problems if we don't know about them. And, you know, a lot of people get confused, Jeanie has her cell phone on.
In violation of my order. Have you got the, you've got the gavel?
She's never listened to me in the last three years. Obviously she didn't start today. So. So, you know, like you said, if it has a painted line on it.
Yeah.
It's not a county road. And we do not have jurisdiction over state or federal highways. As a matter of fact, we can't touch them.
We cannot. We have to ask permission.
They don't want us to touch them. They would get mad if we did and it would be illegal to do it. Not that we wouldn't want to help them. And if they do need us to help them, we can do that under some type of interlocal agreement. But we just encourage people that have questions about roads. We had a call, I called you on yesterday. There's already a work order in place and we just want to remind people that when these work orders are put in, when we go into an area, we try to do all the work orders in that particular area while we're there. Because if you have to load equipment up and drive to the other side of the district, you're spending more time moving equipment and moving personnel and traveling than you're, than you are getting work done. So when we go into an area, we try to do all that work and we try to do it in an orderly fashion. If we put a work order in and it doesn't get done as quickly as you like, it's because we're working somewhere else, but it will get done. If you need to know if a work order is in on a project, you can call 432-6230 and ask for Samantha. Or if there's a problem that needs to be addressed, you can call 432-6230 and make a formal complaint and request that a work order be put in and it'll get done. But if you look at this list, when it's published on Pike TV, and it'll be on Facebook as well, you'll see how much work has been done by the Pike County Road Department the last couple of weeks and what is scheduled to be done. It's really a lot of work. And you'll see on this list, the work that has been completed, a lot of it has to do with flood damage repair. Drains that have to be opened, flood damage repair. It's, it's, it's a lot of work. So again, as you said, be patient. We'll get it done. But understand that we've had a flood in the last month and I think three, three snow events that we've had to deal with. We have a total of 220, I'm sorry, 220 work orders on this record, 220 work orders.
And honestly, that's not, that, we, no, that's not all because we only went back a few months just because they are getting so, so much. Because like the prior work orders we had on, they've not been able to do because we've been dealing with the floods and the roads. So most of what you're seeing there is just from the flood event on, that's the work order. So it's, it's lengthy.
And we'd like to remind the public that when you're dealing with snow and ice removal and flood damage repair, which is clearly extensive over the north, northern half of the county, it means you're not able to do your routine maintenance.
Exactly.
And I'd also like to remind the public that in the last, in, in a 10-month period, we had three floods. Three significant flood events. And we are absolutely running behind on the routine maintenance.
And we are.
The cause of that.
That's right. And I will admit that. And everyone knows that. And it's just part of it. I mean, but we will get caught up. There will be, you know, there will, there will be, this will stop. We'll be able to, we'll be able to catch up. That's the only reason I ask to, you know, to be patient. We will get to you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the county commissioner's recommended road maintenance list? Motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Robertson. Commissioners have anything they'd like to discuss on the road situation or anything about the, the work orders list?
It's like Fabian said, it's going to take time. That's the biggest part.
Commissioner Robertson.
They've worked a lot of long hours too. I mean, they've seven days a week.
The guys have, and I would like to brag on them, you know, because they have, they've stuck in there, every one of them. They've, they've hung in and put in a lot of, a lot of hours, a lot of long hours. We've worked, the, the majority of January, we've worked practically every day. I think maybe three days off in January, I think is about what we had. So, yeah, they're, they're getting tired, but they're hanging in.
Just want to thank them. Public needs to be patient. We'll get to them. Insulting on work till it's about 25.
You're about right. That's it.
Seeing no other questions, discussion, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
All right, the next item is Treasurers Business, Mr. Stacy.
Acknowledged receipt of the calendar year 2022 maximum salary authorizations required by KRS 64.5275 for the county judge, executive, county clerk, county sheriff, and county jailer.
Is there a motion acknowledged receipt of the calendar year 2022 maximum salary authorizations required by KRS 64.5275 for the judge, executive, clerk, sheriff, and county jailer? Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Is there any question or discussion? Seeing now, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
Authorize a check to Palmer Engineering in the amount of $52,706.43 for engineering services on the following two projects. For the Pond Creek Hazard Mitigation Grant, $8,302.43. For the Coal Servants Project, the EDA Wolf Pit 25% Match, $44,404.
Is there a motion authorize a check to Palmer Engineering in the amount of $52,706.43 for engineering services on the Pond Creek Hazard Mitigation Grant, which represents $8,302.43 of that sum? And a Coal Servants Project EDA Wolf Pit 25% Match for $44,404. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question or discussion? Seeing now, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
Authorize a standing order for checks to the Army Corps of Engineers for cost shares for the Pike La Viza floodproofing project, which has been the feasibility studies in the coal run flood wall per our project cooperation agreement. And that would be subject to the funds available in that bank account.
All right. Is there a motion? And that's the 600-plus thousand that we obtained from.
Right, there's 181,000 remaining in that account after we've paid the invoices so far to core engineers.
We probably need to let the core know as soon as that money is, or when it's nearly depleted, we need to send a letter to them advising them as such. So we don't want them to incur an additional cost when we don't have the cost share match. Is there a motion authorize a standing order for checks to the Army Corps of Engineers for cost shares on the Pike La Viza floodproofing project? This is the feasibility study in the coal run flood wall per, per our project cooperation agreement.
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
Authorize checks for lodging registration expenses for any employee wants to attend the 2022 county officials legislative reception, which would be February 9th at the CAECO headquarters in Frankfurt.
Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion? Seeing now, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes. Yes.
Under additional Treasurers Business, I'd like to authorize an additional $100 hazard pay for all the election workers for the May 2022 election.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question or discussion? Seeing now, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
And the last thing, under additional Treasurers Business, would be to increase the pay for the members of the county board of elections from, to $200 from $100 per meeting.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. You know, this is something that should have been done a long time ago. Marie Shilders has been on that board for decades and it's really never gone up. And these folks put a tremendous amount of time in to setting up and helping oversee our elections. And, you know, Pike County's done it right for a long time. We've never had any significant problem running our elections. Our clerk has done a, Rhonda Taylor has done a great job under some very difficult circumstances. With the pandemic, we had, you know, pretty seamless election process. So I think that, again, this is pretty much overdue. So we do have a motion and a second. Any other question or discussion? Seeing now, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
That's all I have, Judge.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, we do have a need for executive session. And Mr. King, would you please instruct the public and fiscal court on the relevant provisions of the Kentucky Open Meeting Law as it pertains to the entry into executive session by a fiscal court? In litigation.
Need a motion to vote under 61 to 810 subsection C and F to discuss proposal pending litigation and specific personnel matters.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes, we'll be in recess for executive session. Return at the call of the chair. It's time, we'll call the court back to orders. Is there a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson. Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. It is my motion to approve accepting the resignation of Michael Harden effective January 18, 2022, to pay Austin Dakota van over as a float driver solid waste lot one at a 3H rate of pay for the time period of January 18th to January 27, 2022, to hire Austin Mount as a loader at solid waste lot one at 2H rate of pay effective 1/31/22, to accept Daniel Branham's resignation effective 1/25/22, to acknowledge the retirement of Doug Tackett effective 1/31/22, to move James Webb to road, temporary road foreman at road lot six at a 4A rate of pay effective 1/24/22, to accept John Willis's resignation effective 1/28/22, to move Purnell Roberts to road foreman at road lot three at a 4A rate of pay with longevity effective 1/29/22, to move Gary France to road lot two as a heavy equipment operator at a 5H rate of pay with longevity effective 1/29/22, to hire Dylan Acres as a loader at solid waste lot one at a 2H rate of pay effective 2/7/22, to move Nate Jackson to emergency management director at the same rate of pay effective 2/1/22, to move James Taylor from a 3H rate of pay to a 4H rate of pay at the road garage. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Robertson. Is there any other question or discussion? Seeing now, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett. Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Department Supervisors comments. Let's start with Ms. Thacker. Ms. Thacker, you do have some information for us, if you would, I think, about the Pikeville senior citizens. Yeah, I've not seen it yet. Have you got it? Where's it at? I want you to do that and we'll move on. If you can run down there and get it for me real quick, okay? Mr. Jackson, anything from emergency management, sir?
Yes, sir. This past week, we had FEMA in here. Doug, Fabian, and myself met with them on the 21st and 25th concerning public assistance. And on the 27th, the individual assistance, Doug, myself, and Tim met with them. Took them out throughout the county. And we had, on the individual side, we had seven properties listed as destroyed, 31 major, 44 minor, 144 affected for 226. And we also had 47 properties that were, that were called in, were drains, property damage, that driveways, that type of thing, for a total of 273.
Can you give me those numbers one more time?
Yes, sir. Seven destroyed, 31 major, 44 minor, and 144 affected. And we're, of course, still waiting, hearing from them on whether or not we'll, we'll receive assistance. But they have come out and done the preliminary assessments on the individual and the public side.
Do we have a total what the public damage to air infrastructure is?
Do not have a total on that.
Okay. Ballpark, Fabian? Come on up.
Probably get somewhere around the 4 million, maybe somewhere around that 4 million mark. I think Commissioner Robertson's area, I think he was probably a million two, I'm thinking. And then Commissioner Booth, we, we will act today getting all of his info in. And then, then we will be able to get these numbers, you know, hard and, you know, the hard numbers. I'm trying to think, honestly, Booth, Commissioner Booth should have probably around 3 million on his own. So that's the reason I'm saying we should be around 4 million, 4.2, 4.5, somewhere around that area.
So how much money do you, what do we have to meet to get this assistance?
13% air part, the Fed's put in 75.
7.2 million is the state threshold.
Yes.
What?
7.2 millions.
So we should.
They raised that up, didn't they?
January 1st, it raised.
But we should, they should meet that anyway. So, but.
We had eight other counties that were involved as well.
Yeah, and they were.
It was a pretty good threshold before, before they even came to Pike County. We also, the other, there were three other partners. There's Board of Education, Mountain Water, and Coal Run were, were three other entities that they looked at as well.
So then that means the public understands FEMA picks up 75%. So, uh, then that means the public understands FEMA picks up seventy-five percent, state picks up twelve percent, and we pick up thirteen percent. But air, toward our thirteen percent, we can use our labor-
Yes.
-equipment, fuel toward that thirteen percent. Uh, so, but it's still going to be a substantial amount of money. Uh, eighty-seven percent of four million dollars is better than having to spend, you know, four million out of our pocket. Because, you know, the storm in September didn't qualify and that all came out of the county's-
Yes.
County's pocket. So. Thank you for the information.
You're welcome, sir.
How do you feel about the individual assistance, Doug, after your co- or knee, after co- that's habits?
That's a, that's okay. Um, I, I, I feel pretty, uh, confident that, that we will, um, get assistance. They did tell us that, um, they had already, they already had the ball rolling. It was, it, Friday, he was going to send it. The lead was going to send it to their regional office in Atlanta. And, um, he said, so it's not something that's just going to start from zero. So, um, he said the ball was rolling on it. So I feel pretty confident, um, that we should be able to get something. It'll be a little bit before we know, for sure.
Appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Williamson, anything? Mr. Jack, is anything for trail officer? Mr. Spears, anything? Share anything from grant office? Mr. Moore, anything for solid waste? Mr. Kaiser, anything from plu- floodplain office? Uh, Mr. Little, anything? Mr. Mainor, anything? Anyone else, treasurer or clerk, have any business? Mr. King, anything from county attorney's office? Commissioner Tackett, you have anything from district two?
Uh, Judge, I just want to thank, uh, employees of this county, uh, the way they've been working on this. Well, whether it's solid waste out in this ice and snow and cold weather, or road department, or here in the office, or the garage, or, you know, just across the county, uh, what kind of job they, great job they've been doing. Uh, I know some people kind of got aggravated over some of the other projects, but, uh, you know, we got a, when the snow and ice hits pretty much every day this month, that's number one priority is to get it off. And, you know, another thing is, is salt don't work till it gets a certain temperature. And I understand that and it just takes time. Uh, another thing's come to my attention across the county is, uh, you know, and I know they, they employ a lot of people and there's three or four different companies of the tree service, uh, but we've started getting a lot more complaints on them drop, dumping the, uh, chips and the, the, the wood and stuff next to the creeks and, and stopping up, uh, uh, our creeks. And, uh, I was just wondering if we'd, uh, had any more, they moved any farther on the, uh, on the, uh,
Go ahead.
Oh.
I was trying to do something.
Okay, uh, on, uh, where we could do something to the, these tree cutting services about how they're just dumping wherever they want to, I guess is what I'm saying.
I think we ought to make it a class A misdemeanor, make it a crime for them to go up here and dump this stuff, uh, and implement some type of fine for them to do it. Fabian, come on up and tell me what's your take on this.
I kn- I know that that one, one, that water got high on Link Fork is on account of some trees that, uh, that they cut. And then we'd had a guy come in, uh, from, uh, Meat House today and was talking about how they was six or seven of them got flooded and the, and it stopped their drain pipes up. You know, I, I, I just think that we need to hold them accountable for what they're do- what's happening there.
We've talked about this for three years, right, Fabian?
We have.
It's time to do an order, something to make them pay for what they're doing. They're still cutting the timber, laying it on the hills. It eventually comes to the ditch lines. Then it gets washed out in the roads, gets washed in our drains.
And then the dumping is a big, big problem, you know, where they're going to dump this stuff beside the roads.
Shelby, we clean it up. As fast as we clean it up, it's dumped right back again.
Yeah. Alleghany, they do the same thing up there at Brushy, I think is the name of the, the mouth of Brushy, uh, they dump there. And then there at Meat House, that was all, all that damage that, uh, you said.
The Meat House still, don't you?
Yeah, I've got those.
And then there on the Rock House in Marbone, there at the Y where you go up, uh, you know, uh, that, that they dump a lot of trees and debris right in there.
Yeah. Yeah, we just cleaned that one up.
I understand they pay, they pay, uh, uh, payroll taxes and stuff in this county, but, you know, we still gotta, they still gotta be-
Well, I mean, drive up Collins Highway past Larry Tooley's and look on the left as you're going back toward Robinson Creek at the, the natural debris that has been dumped there. Um, and that natural debris, and while it is natural, there's also people, when they see that, thinks it's okay just to stop and throw a bunch of garbage in it.
And that will always happen. Anywhere you dump a brush, I'm telling you, you will have a garbage dump.
You know, and so there's two ordinances that we need to get drafted and have presented at the next court meeting in, uh, a couple of weeks. Is the ordinance on, uh, people, uh, inhabiting, uh, abandoned homes? The squatters ordinance, uh, to address a problem that's growing in Pike County where the folks over at, you know, at Black, or at Belfry have had a public meeting over it. And the other one is these, uh, tree trimming companies illegally, uh, or improperly, uh, dumping, uh, trimmings in, in, uh, in, uh, material, uh, that they've cut in just anywhere. Um, so-
They, they need to dump in our landfill.
I agree.
Or they take it back to where they park their trucks and their lot and dump it in the lot and let them worry about cleaning it up.
And there are people that want them to dump it on their land. But, you know, the thing about it is, they should be of, you know, and I, and I guess they do have some paper that they sign, let the property owner sign it, but it still don't give the right to just dump it beside the road.
Beside the road.
I think the ordinance, I think the ordinance needs to say that they have to designate places to the county where they plan on dumping.
That they could, they could even do that to my office. Have, you know, to designate, you know, to let us know.
Any places that they dump has to be reported to the road department and confirmed. Um-
And the only reason I say my office is because that's where we get most of the dam- or that's where we get the damage from it, is where they're dumping off beside of our county roads.
It fills up drains and fills up, you know, ditches. And then we have to go back and clean their material out of the ditches that we'd already cleaned.
Yeah. Well, we just spent two days over on Marbone, uh, just cleaning up nothing but, uh, dumpings from the, the tree service. Uh, for two days.
And, and I think it needs to have criminal and civil penalties in it if we catch them doing it, that they ought to be prosecuted. So, um-
Like I said, I understand they got Pike County residents to work them for. I understand that. But, you know, you, they, they hold everybody else liable for what they do, these, uh, we do for other companies. And, you know, there, there's nobody no different.
That's right.
You know, that, I mean, that's the way I feel about it. You know, they-
As long, as long as we put up with it, they'll do it.
And I will call that tree company service. I'll call again as soon as this meeting's over.
Judge, other than that, you know, just, Fabian, we heard anything back on the, the crowd had studied at Penny Street or, you? Almost completed? Okay. Yeah. Okay. Matt? Okay, all right. Um, other than that, Judge, that's about all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Robertson? Commissioner Robertson's probably going to want to address what I'm going to say and come back on after, we've got that estimate on the Pikeville senior citizens. Go ahead. Okay. So, um, I just had handed to me the estimate to renovate the building that the city has agreed to provide. That estimate was a million fifty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-three cents with architectural and engineering fees, geotech study, and survey. First of all, uh, I cannot believe that the addition in renovations would cost, uh, a million dollars to an existing building that, you know, people have events in now. Um, so with that said, Eric, I would like to get a second opinion on this. Um, obviously, under the procurement code, we don't have to, um, to bid that because architectural is a professional service. It doesn't have to be bid. Um, so before, at the next court meeting, I plan on making a motion. Uh, I, I, I just simply, you know, I don't believe that, I think we're entitled to do a second opinion. You agree with that? And we don't have to hire this guy if we choose not to design this. Is that correct?
Guess at the last meeting, had motion to get a recommendation or we knocked out a contract.
Well, I, I'm going to make a motion at the next, so let's hold off on signing any contract with him. And, I mean, you know, we, we'll be happy to pay him for his service so far, but there's no way that we can spend a million fifty-three thousand on that building. The mayor, I, I had, I talked to the mayor. The mayor is like me. Uh, his, his comment was, that's ridiculous. And I'm going to second that. I agree a hundred percent that there's no reason that that building, the addition that we need and the renovations on that building should cost a million dollars. So, so we need to have, we need to have a conversation with this architect that, uh, you know, I'm going to, you know, we'll be happy to pay him for what he's done to this point, but we're not going to use that services of that because if, if this is what we have to deal with, um, you know, i- it's not possible for us to do that. Now, it might be that we just, you know, I, I want a second opinion on it. It, it may be, it may be that a second opinion concurs with this.
Well, listen, just do this, Judge. Uh, when I take that estimate, why not? Someone else?
I don't, I, I don't want to do that. I want to do it from scratch because he- here's what I want to know. I want to know if the stuff that's in this estimate, I want somebody to give me a completely separate estimate.
Judge, why don't you go ahead and make a motion to do that?
Well, it's a special meeting. We can't do that.
Okay.
So-
It's not, we're socks far behind on this.
We got what we, we just got what we've been waiting on.
Yeah.
I don't want to give an architect and say, well, this is what I want you to price. I want them to tell me from scratch what we need. So at the next court meeting, I'm going to do some research and I'm going to make a motion to find an architect to give us a second opinion, okay? Because if they look at, you know, if their, if their opinion is much different than this one, I mean, th- there's no way that you can spend a million dollars on that building, uh, in my opinion. So we, you, why don't you go ahead and reach out to the architect and just tell him that that's, that's a non-starter? And, uh, that we'll be happy again to pay him for what he's done to this point, but, um, that's, that's not something that I would, would think that is feasible. All right. Eric, when you were out a second, do you have anything else that you wanted to tell us? Sorry. All right, Commissioner Robertson, go ahead.
I, I just want to say, you know, we know we can't afford that. Uh, but we'll keep looking. We'll keep trying to find a place or maybe get another estimate on it and we'll go from there. I know we're way behind getting this done, but government takes time. So. I want to thank everybody that's worked on the solid waste and the road crews. They've been out of some terrible conditions. And, uh, the road crew I know has worked a lot of days straight and we appreciate that. And I just want the residents, uh, this county know how hard they do work. Uh, I know they get passed by a lot and think we don't do anything, but now they spend a lot of days and late nights out trying to keep the roads clear for you. And, uh, the solid waste is fighting through COVID, keeping our drivers, uh, on the roads has been hard. It's been hard on the solid waste. So just ask, be patient with us, you know? W- we try to do you a good job and we will do you a good job, but you've got to give us a little time, everything that's happened in the county. Thank you.
Commissioner Booth?
Yeah, Judge, I'd like to also thank all of our employees, uh, you know, our road lots, uh, they went through a lot here lately working, cleaning up roads. When you've got three million dollars worth of damage in your district, you've got a lot of damage. So it's going to take a while to clean all of that up. Uh, also, uh, we had a little meeting in Hardy with, about, uh, people living these abandoned homes and stuff going on. And I think hopefully next meeting or two, uh, the county attorney, uh, Kevin King, or he will have hopefully something on a squatter's rights, uh, thing that we can get set up. You might want to-
Yeah, I'll work on that, Brian. The, uh, Commissioner Booth and Sheriff Scott and I went over to the meeting and heard the complaints of the, the folks over there. And they've got some issues that they need to go through. And we've got the squatters issues through the whole county, but they've got a particular problematic neighborhood over there right now. And, um, you and I have discussed some of the issues this morning and I'm working on an ordinance to present to the court, hopefully at the next meeting. And, uh, hopefully we can go over there together at the next meeting and address that for them.
Right, yeah. So we, hopefully we'll have something worked out with that. And also yesterday, anybody that lives in the Hardy community or Belfry, uh, we lost a, a good person in the community yesterday, Leo Carden. He passed away yesterday. So I'd like his family to be remembered in the upcoming days. Everybody, I mean, it was round Hardy, an old Leo Carden. So I'd like to have his family remember the same, Judge.
Thank you, sir. All right. Uh, Judge, anything? Does you, all right. I don't have anything to come before the court other than the fact that we, uh, we did have a significant number of COVID cases, uh, this past week. The numbers are through the roof. Um, you know, as careful as I've been, uh, you know, I, uh, I had, uh, I had it last week, week before last. Uh, I was vaccinated, had mild symptoms. And, um, I think that one of my daughters had it, not sure where either one of us got it. Uh, she was, you know, vaccinated and boosted, had minor symptoms. So hopefully the vaccines are keeping people from getting really sick. I would encourage everyone to continue to be safe about it, continue to social distance where possible and to get vaccinated. Uh, we had a thousand and ninety cases last week in Pike County. Uh, that is a huge number of cases. I mean, it's on the pace for, you know, the biggest month of COVID yet. We had one day that set a new record of two hundred and twelve cases, I believe. So it is concerning. Uh, there are still people dying in this county with this virus. And I can't encourage people strongly enough to take it serious. A lot of us are, myself included, we want it over with. We want this virus to go away. Um, but still, we have people in our community that are, that are really suffering because of it and continue to, to remember them in your prayers and, and just use good common sense. So. That being said, is there any other business to come before the fiscal court? Mr. Song, would you please say the benediction for us, sir, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Judge Craig, here comes the following. Thank you for today. Father God, we ask that you go with us, Father, as we go back to our offices and, Father God, we ask for the blessings upon this court and the churches here, Father God, as they go about doing the work of the people. Father God, we lift those up to you that are sick and afflicted with COVID and other afflictions, Father God. Father God, we just thank you for all the blessings that you have spilled upon each and every one of us. In the Jesus' precious name, we pray, we ask, amen.
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 Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.